Good. All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And before we start, I want to say that Patrick, Brendan, and Kim all send their regrets. Patrick, the Select Board meeting got moved from last night to tonight. And last time, there was a conflict, he came here. So he felt like he had to go to the Select Board meeting. Brendan is in New Hampshire from work. And Kim is at a State Board of Education meeting in Rutland that is going through the dinner hour and beyond, which she didn't, she hadn't known this was going to happen. So I just heard from her an hour ago. So we still have a courtroom, and we have lots of important things to do tonight. So we'll go without them. So the first item on the agenda is comments from the public on items that are not part of tonight's agenda. Does anyone want to speak under this item? No. Okay, we'll move on. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Okay. So entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of minutes from January 7th and January 14th, approval of warrants, approval of leave, and approval of professional points. Thanks, Al. Al makes the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, no. So tonight, we have two student groups visiting us. I don't know if you have negotiated who's going first.
Maybe it's just sitting there.
Their microphone is at the front of the house.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you.
Hello, we're Essex High School Diversity Club. My name is Toki.
I'm Kiana.
And we have something to read for you. For the third year in a row, Diversity Club is requesting to put up the Black Lives Matter flag. Diversity Club is a growing organization at Essex High School. Our mission is to celebrate and promote cultural diversity within our community. Our members have created a petition in support of the Black Lives Matter flag movement. As of now, we have gathered signatures from Essex High School students who are in support of our mission. We are happily, we are happily to attend the January 21st meeting of the Essex, the school board in the short, ooh, and in the shortened window of opportunity for our petition. In the last few days at lunch, Diversity Club members have secured 228 signatures for roughly one-sixth of the school.
The Black Lives Matter flag is not just a flag. It is a sign letting all African-Americans feel acknowledged in a positive light and welcomed to our school. And welcoming mentality is incredibly significant due to our small population of 4% African-Americans at Essex High School. Additionally, the Diversity Club believes that the Black Lives Matter flag helps make all people of color feel more welcome at EHS and helps them feel at home in our school.
By flying the Black Lives Matter flag, we hope that it will spark thoughtful discussions on race in our community. This demonstration of inclusivity would also show support and acceptance to all students of different races and ethnicities. The Black Lives Matter flag would show that as a community, we are conscious and accepting of different races. Visuals such as the Black Lives Matter flag will highlight how great of a community EHS and the EWSD district is and how receptive and proactive we are with racial issues.
Thank you for your time.
So if you would stay there in case for numbers of questions, that would be wonderful. Does anyone have a question? Kayhan?
Well, I'm not seeing how long you're suggesting this fly.
From our previous proposals, we have done from February for Black History Month till the end of the year around June 13th.
So that's your request?
Todd?
That was my question.
That was mine, too. Does anyone have another question or comment?
I have a comment just to say thank you for being here and to remember that last year, there was somebody in the audience who spoke about getting to a place where this request wouldn't have to be made and that they wouldn't have to come, that there wouldn't have to be people coming forward to explain why it matters. And so I appreciate you doing that and hope we get to a point where we don't have to explain why it matters. So thank you so much.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you for your advocacy, for taking time to do the petition, and for being here tonight. So let's vote on these two requests separately. So let's vote on this one first. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. So I'm going to say the motion is to approve the request to fly the Black Lives Matter flag at the high school during February for Black History Month. Good, that's right, good. And through the rest of the school year. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, no. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much. I think we have a second student group. I have. Welcome.
I'm going to put the microphone.
This is a petition we had today during lunch.
Your phone. Good.
Hi, I'm Capella. This is Tasia and Emily, and we're here to talk about a Black Lives Matter flag.
As you guys know, we're here in hopes to get the Black Lives Matter flag raised in front of our school. We think that this would be a good thing because it'll be a welcoming message to ADL and our district and everyone that comes around. The majority of students that we talked to today and yesterday at our assembly was on board with it, and they were very excited to get this flag raised. And the Black Lives Matter movement stands for equality. The systemic racism in the schools, government, and workplaces is evident, and we need to raise awareness about it. Awareness is the first step to fixing a problem. And this flag will hopefully help ADL continue to have an important conversations in advance to working towards equality.
Vermont is a very white state. There is not a lot of racial diversity. Coming to a school where there's not a lot of colored people can make students feel out of place sometimes. We know this flag doesn't solve racism, but it helps to get to a better place with having conversations and making people aware. We have an extra responsibility, since we aren't a very racial diverse community, to make sure that the people that are colored or come from somewhere else know that they are included and known of.
Our reason for flying this flag is not specifically to be against, like, police brutality. Like, we're definitely against police brutality, but it's not like the main reason. We're not flying it to be like, we definitely need to stop police brutality, but I think that there's just a lot of other reasons, and we just want to bring awareness to the fact. So we're not trying to fly this flag to be anti-police or, like, attack them in any way, and we know that they have a very difficult job, and there isn't a, a lot of it is in the gray area. There aren't really black and white decisions. Our community needs a strong relationship with the police, so we plan to invite any officers who could come to the flag raising. Our plan needed to include the starting of conversations because that was the way that we were going to raise awareness. We have gathered a group of student leaders that are going to be going into a block of team time to educate and facilitate conversations amongst students about the flag and any questions they might have. Tomorrow, we're going to be having a meeting with those facilitators led by a World of Difference eighth graders to have a just meeting and about the presentation that's going to be taking place next Tuesday. The purpose of the facilitated conversations is to let students express their thoughts on the flag in, like, a safe environment where they're going to feel heard. If there is backlash against it, I think it just shows that we need to raise the flag even more. That's even more of a reason to fly it. I bet if we raised the POW MIA flag, I don't think people would say, what about veterans who've come back? What about other veterans? And I think that that's because it's about, it's because it's an issue regarding racism. I think people are just a lot more sensitive to that. I don't think if we flew a lot of other flags, people would have the same response if it was a Black Lives Matter flag. And I think a lot of people don't, if they don't like the idea, it's because it makes them uncomfortable. And I think that that's a good thing because racism and the issues that we're facing right now should make you uncomfortable.
We made a plan of how we wanted to talk to our school about this and what we would do. Yesterday, we had an assembly where we announced the idea to students. And today, we went into lunches, and we explained what the petition was for, and we told any students that if they wanted to support this, they could sign it. We have a total of 297 signatures from the staff and students. We're going to educate our peers through facilitated conversations during team time. If we did get this approved, our plan would be to fly the flag February 3rd, which is the first Monday in February for Black History Month. We wanted to fly it through March, too, because February is already a short month, so we wanted to make a more lasting impact.
Learning about an important topic like this can lead us to, lead us to be more understanding about what's going on in our world and our community. For more understanding, we'll become more accepting towards, like, other people, and this will grow our hearts and the idea of the Black Lives Matter movement. In these facilitated conversations, students will be taking information and learning about how to have good conversations about it, and learning how to listen and communicate, even how to respectfully disagree with the topic, and skills that will help students for the rest of their lives. And everyone will be included in discussions in the classrooms, and this will be a new way of learning.
Citations.
Thank you. That was an excellent presentation. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you. You covered everything that you need to cover for us to approve your request.
I just have one. Again, thank you so much for being here. And might you consider, or is it back for a different proposal to raise it same time as the high school and have those flags for the same time through the end of May? Is that a different request?
It's a different.
Okay. So, sorry. Yes.
Okay. All right. Then entertain a motion to approve the request of the students from Albert D. Liden Middle School to raise the Black Lives Matter flag on February 3rd and to fly it through the end of March, and knowing that they are going to facilitate conversations with students about issues of racism and diversity. Thanks, Todd. Need for her comment, her discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, no. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. It's always inspiring to have students with us and remind us, it reminds us of With that, we'll move on to our FY21 budget discussion.
Another reminder of why I'm here. So our focus this evening is instructional services and supports. We have Erin McGuire here with us to provide the actual facts and information that I might otherwise overlook. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, are we, we're into a question.
Oh, Todd, I'm sorry.
Just wondered if we'll ever get these budget-related information before the actual meeting. I would find it really helpful to get it ahead of the meeting so I can come prepared to ask questions as opposed to just listen to a presentation.
We understand that. The problem, one of the issues is that we're from week to week in going into this, so we sat down with Erin recently to be able to develop it. So you're seeing it as, we don't develop it way ahead of time and prepare these slides, so Brian works really hard on the budget piece of it and then gets the slides. So it's difficult because of the timing of the meetings every other week, I mean, every week. It's very hard to get them way ahead of time, but...
Could we at least get the budget piece ahead of time then and not the presentation?
Yeah, so the survey feedback was really helpful, and I've answered some of it in a series of ways and intended to answer it in tonight's presentation, but we can skip to that point. That we're at a point where there's a quid, a large amount of information that's now provided to the board via the board website. All the detailed proposals are there, line item detail, variance analysis, operational detail, the survey and feedback, which many people felt that the last meeting was very valuable and helpful for them, to work towards the schedule of making a decision next month. So part of your, you know, part of the element is, this is a process of accumulating information to give you more opportunity to reflect. So no one's asked to make a decision this evening, and it would be inappropriate not to give you information ahead of time. But this is an accumulation. We've scheduled six budget meetings through the course of two months. One, to make sure that your public is well aware and they have access to it, but also two, so that you have time to digest and deliberate and that we don't end up with a rush at the end. So I think there's some information here, and the feedback is there. About 70% of the board is concerned or uncomfortable with not receiving information ahead of time. I say in that feedback that administration will make it a priority to get out ahead of the next meeting, and I've already done that, starting today, with line item detail and variance reporting.
We'll see how it goes. Thank you.
So this evening, we have some budget material. We'll talk about some of the internal and external ways to get the budget material. We'll review the work session schedule one more time. We'll do a recap on the state data that we talked about, as well as a touch point on operations that we talked about at the last meeting. I also have some specific information about some of the clarifications around personnel costs and the healthcare benefit costs. Presentation will focus this evening on direct instruction, special education, some of the equity investments that we're anticipating for FY21, and then Beth will talk some about the EWSD instructional leadership model that's contemplated in the FY21 budget. And I'm going to present what some range of tax impacts are based upon where we are with the current draft and where we are with some of our current understanding with the statewide healthcare settlement. We'll talk about next steps. The next meeting is in seven days from now, on the 28th, and we'll continue an instructional focus focusing on PLCs, high-impact outcomes and the investments associated with it, professional development, and then update on SEL and wellness. So at the end tonight, we'll ask if there's any questions or guidance adjustments, and we'll definitely review some of the places where you can find information as it becomes available. So the public has the ewsd.org budget site. This is getting some good traction. We have some analytics on it. Ben is keeping it up to date. We're putting information out to the public within 24 to 48 hours of a meeting, making sure that it's there, it's organized well, people are transparent. At this point in time, I hear from my peers that the site is quite a resource to them. It's serving the needs of Vermont educators, at this point at least. And then internally, the school board's portal, you have access to information right on the homepage. You can go to the 21 data, and that's a place where you can see a lot of the line item detail, variance explanations. All the slides are there, including some of the work that Beth did with the data slides and so forth. So hopefully, it's a one-stop shop and should be an accumulator for your questions and answers so that the entire board is aware of that information as it's disseminated.
So Brian, where do we find the questions and answers?
If you go right onto that FY21 budget page and go down a bit.
Go down, EWSD, the ewsd.org site. So you have to put up the site.
So it's not on our site?
It's on the board portal. Yep.
Are you on the board portal right now?
So on the homepage?
Right. So I'm under resources? Is it somewhere else?
Yep. You can go to it either, if you're from the homepage, you can either go to it by choosing the button right down on the homepage, or you can go up to resources and choose FY21 budget. Once you're there, the page has a landing of the most recent feedback, all the board files related to the budget, and then down further below, a Q&amp;A section of the questions that came in, the answers, the date that they came in that they're provided, plus going back to budget guidance, the data from literacy and so forth.
I didn't scroll far enough. Thank you.
And just so that, that information is not dramatically different than the information that's open to all the public by going to this site. It has all the agendas, the slides, the minutes, the video from RETN for all the meetings and so forth. So, I mean, I think it meets much of the board's intentions for a process that's transparent in the public.
Great. Thank you.
So that's the way the board can kind of keep track and have a place in plausory for all the information. Budget work sessions, we completed the first one on the 14th, where we focused on the building blocks and operations. This is the instructional one. After this evening, we have a fully dedicated work session, another board process, another dedicated work session, and another board process. So we have about four more weeks of doing this together. The state data recap. On equalized pupils, we talked about that our equalized pupils currently is declining about 1%. The sixth semester average for CTE is increasing about 2%, which is great news for the Center for Technology. Incentive rate is dropping to 4 cents. Next year, it will drop to 2, and then it will end, and that's related to our merger. Common level of appraisal is a challenge for us. They're decreasing by approximately 5% for Westford and about 2.5% for the town and the junction. The statewide healthcare information is still flowing out. Right now, initial projections show an annualized cost increase of nearly $800,000, and depending upon lots of factors, that could actually increase from there. And then the weighted study, as we discussed at the last meeting, it's sort of a wait-and-see, not anticipating that to be an issue in this year for FY21. District operations, we reviewed those, went through them. The total ending for district operations was a reduction of about $800,000 for district operations. The child nutrition services anticipated to break even. We covered that in detail. However, the statewide healthcare settlement probably has a significant impact, or could have a significant impact, on child nutrition. They're probably the operation out of any section of our work that really manages away from benefits because of those cost increases in that labor pool. So it could mean some real positives for attraction and retention, but it could also mean some significant needs for operating support. That's the number again for district operations year over year. So personnel. Since last year's budget, your district finance people and HR people have been working to adopt the newly required uniform chart of accounts by the state. It's required that everyone across the state does it. It's also required that everyone across the state implement a new accounting and human resource software by the end of 2021. This work's created a number of cases where coding of expenses and employees no longer aligns with past practice, and it's causing some really positive and negative variances along the way. It's particularly evident when you really drill down in the detail to specific functions and/or departments, so that you start to see it more on an upper level, at sort of a 20,000-foot view. It's, that kind of evens out, but as we've needed to recode different positions and personnel, we're recoding them into FY21, not going back and changing FY20. And I just want to assure you that while the presentation via traditional budget report can create some confusion, know that personnel is zero-based budgeted down to the individual. All staff is reviewed multiple times and tied back to our payroll and tax reporting systems. So the variances, while they may appear to have some confusion embedded in them, they really, we have a, we have a very tight basis on our position control and how we budget. So the movement here, it's going to be a little confusing, a little clumsy, but in the end, a much improved system across the entire state.
This direction from the state with the uniform chart of accounts, the individual districts will still be at will to get the software, but they have to demonstrate it meets the state charge?
No, it's now all mandated to use the state software.
Oh, so it's going to be across the board?
Yep. And the chart of accounts is not just a book that says, hey, use this account number, which is the way it was in the past. It is now, by having a new accounting system, it is a very locked-down process so that we can't add accounts or, you know, certain elements that we just don't control. The state controls at a top level.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Yeah.
To get comparative data.
It will mean at a click of a button, the legislature will be able to have actual data that they can count on opposed to their data collection. So the FY21 budgeted health benefits, we budget three items. The employer portion of the premiums, the percentage of health reimbursement account, or the HRA exposure, and the costs related to cash and lieu. or the HRA exposure, and the cost related to cash and lieu for employees opting not to take or enroll in our insurance. The current budget does not currently account for the statewide healthcare. We'll get to that. By the end, we'll figure out what to do with that. For this year's budgeting, the districts used a projected premium increase of twelve point nine. That was, at one point in time, what we were told is the shall not exceed. And we use sixty-five percent of the realized liability, the HRA cost. We know that not a hundred percent of our employees will use a hundred percent of their HRA. So we have a realized liability that we fund. And then, and the current census of employees presently choosing cash and lieu. So the big change in our methodology year over year is that the realized liability is down from seventy-seven percent down to sixty-five. So last year, at this time when we were budgeting, we were still relatively new in our HRA business. We were also going through Data Path. We were going through a few other things related to our HRA. And we decided to make sure that we were well-covered and took less risk on a new product. So we covered high on seventy-seven. This year, we're down to sixty-five. So we feel like we can lessen it. I do want to make a point that some of the early indications look like the healthcare settlement could increase our liability as high as eighty percent because it's all first dollar. Where currently, our plan is after the employee portion, employee portion of the deductible is met. The other major change is the number of employees opting for cash and lieu. It's up twenty-six percent year over year going into FY twenty-one budgeting. There's a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-three employees that opt for cash and lieu opposed to insurance enrollment. The good result of these two changes is despite a twelve-point-nine percent premium increase, the total healthcare costs are projected to actually decrease by twenty-two thousand dollars.
Until we factor in the statewide.
But it's good news opposed to being, you know, really pushing it. And then I broke down all the details between the premiums, the cash and lieu, the HRA, and then what the total is, comparing each one of those, and you can sort of see the swing. I just want to point out that, you know, this cash and lieu has multiple elements. Is that when someone moves to cash and lieu, they move out of an HRA eligibility. When they move into cash and lieu, they move out of one of our enrollments. Thirty-one additional employees choosing cash and lieu is using our average plan costs for the district of fourteen-six. It's a savings of about four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars, just those thirty-one employees. Now, one of the things we're seeing is cash and lieu. We're trying to do some data analysis and seeing how many of our new employees under the age of twenty-six are choosing cash and lieu until they age out of an existing plan that they're on. And so we may see that this is not a long-term factor like we've seen in the past. People have gone on cash and lieu and pretty much stayed there. We may just be seeing a period where, and maybe that, maybe the churn of that is, works out for us. But you can see that this is a pretty considerable cost avoidance for us that we're able to then reinvest in other areas.
It can also be too with the troubles with Data Path last year, that people left our system and went to
Yeah.
a partner's system. So they took cash, which probably was a good idea.
Yeah. So we're going to move on to the better part. So instruction. Up here is the theory of action from our district. When we deepen our commitment to each other and to continuous growth for everyone, then our practices create equitable, authentic, inclusive learning experiences that benefit all students. And just to bring it back, as we go into instruction, again, our continuous improvement plan, which is our instructional strategic plan, multi-year plan, brings us through twenty-twenty-three and our measurable outcomes. So the focus for this evening is direct instruction, special education, equity investments, and our leadership model. Direct instruction encompasses most of the building-based services, which directly interface and impact our learners, our students, and conducted by our staff. The work is found in those function areas. Primarily, direct instruction is the largest investment with over thirty-eight million committed to personnel in these functions and over four million in non-personnel expenses for these areas. So there's presently seventeen teachers who have informed the district of their intention to retire. That's one of the big swings that's happening. There's anticipated savings through new hires for those elements. Personnel costs in athletics does not mark any significant change in going into twenty-one. Rather, it's personnel dollars in twenty, including staff that have left the district or have taken reassignments. It's primarily, we're seeing in the twenty budget, that there was still a continuation of the hiring of a new athletic director and the continued budgeting of Jeff Goodrich inside of athletics. And now they're in, going into twenty-one, that is corrected. There's three retirements within guidance and library across the district. And we anticipate new hire savings in those areas. And then changes in personnel will be covered more in depth when Beth talks about the leadership model at all the schools. And the overall reduction in non-personnel expenses is associated with the SEL offset that we talked about. The leadership team chose to take these building-based expenses and lower their budget more to the FY nineteen actuals. So it's about, in this demonstration, you can see it's about a two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollar non-personnel reduction from budget to budget. The personnel lines up top, we just talked about some. Basically, the health insurance not going up and retirements occurring, as well as some movement related to the leadership team model. I'll have that being a relatively small amount. Overall, this direct instruction function is decreasing by sixty-one thousand dollars. Questions about what makes up direct instruction? So we wanted to spend some time because that thirty-eight million dollars is really predicated on our enrollment and then the decisions we make with regards to class size. And then that has an impact on what we'll have for our teaching staff. There's a series of other staff that are associated. Some of those are based on census. Some of them are in student need. But this is a lion's share of our budget is based upon these elements here. So again, this is information we shared before. We're looking at FY twenty to FY twenty-one and what we're seeing as far as enrollment and our projections of enrollment. Relatively flat going in, a slight change of about seven students. Some of that will be picked up as we go into FY twenty-one, certainly with registrations. But we'll also see how we are in our yield for tuition students. So then the classroom, K-eight classroom staffing projections. So what we do here is we take a look at where we are currently with our staffing. And this is the number of teachers by grade. So you can see both going down as well as across is that we have a total of seventeen kindergarten teachers currently, fourteen first-grade teachers and so forth. Then they're clustered in relationship to our class size average policy. And then we project that forward based upon enrollment. We project that forward to see where we're going to have deltas plus and minus. There is some switching. And what we see happening right now in the current projections, we're budgeting for one less classroom teacher at Fleming, a classroom teacher moving from Founders to Essex Elementary, and teachers at both Summit and Hiawatha transitioning from kindergarten to grade three. And it's important to note that registration withdrawals occur all the time, usually spike immediately after the passage of the budget. And, and what we have to do is work out those needs within the constraints of whatever the approved budget authority is.
Keely?
Just looking at these several slides and reading that the kindergarten class is going to be another large one. But the teachers are moving back out of kindergarten at Summit and Hiawatha. Is it appropriate to ask now about that decision? Because I'm seeing that you're projecting like twenty kids in kindergartens at Summit and fourteen kids in second grade at Hiawatha. And those are both like not really that close to the optimum average for those grade levels?
Right. And our class size, we work across plus work inside of buildings. So it's sort of a back and forth element.
So last year, what happened, and it was a decision made by the principals, actually. They had a smaller third-grade class and moved to K. And that could be, if that ends up the same with a larger class coming in, that they may end up staying in K. It's looking at numbers. Right now, it actually looks like third grade would be okay without the movement. It'll be a shift maybe from second to third. But we know by the numbers of students and the number of teachers we have, we're okay. Unless we get an influx of even more. So we're not, I'm not sitting here saying where, what teacher's going to teach where when I look at that chart. We know by numbers, we're okay with the number of teachers we have. The principals may have to do some shifting like we did last year. We do know that EAS has a bigger class, and so we do need another teacher there. And that's where we'll do a shift from Founders, which they have a smaller third-grade class going in. And Fleming has a smaller third-grade class going in and a retirement we're not filling.
So this, on the staffing, there's one less classroom teacher anticipated. And we have one retirement that's occurring within that population. So there would be no anticipation of any rifts or anything like that, right?
I guess I was just asking about, like, I understand having those larger classes in third grade this year because it's a small class overall. That makes sense. I don't understand reducing the number of kindergarten teachers if the class is projected to stay the same size.
Yeah, I think it, I mean, part of this is a math exercise that's focused on these columns on the right-hand side with regards to like seven-point-nine for kindergarten, which is right around where we're, you know, it's between the optimal and the maximum. And then if you add it, you start to get between the optimal and the minimum. So some of it is that element where Beth said that once we get to this point, I mean, we really need time to happen, probably at least into June to sort of see where this is and where enrollments are. I mean, one indicator is that we decided to go with carrying over last year's kindergarten numbers despite the fact that our one-sixty-six population is down by about forty students year over year. So we've got a little bit of a periscope into four-year-olds into the area, much better than we used to have before. But how many of those we yield and how many new ones come in is kind of the trick. So we figured we'd, instead of going low, we'd go high, see where the numbers were. And then there might be all the kind of what we did last year.
Brian, I do think twenty-point-seven in kindergarten at Summit is too high. So can we be assured that that's not where we'll end up? Especially when you have second grade at Hiawatha at fourteen.
Well, we may end up at that with, with a classroom teacher. But we may see the need to add additional resources and personnel in there. So there may be ways to do it. I mean, some of this is also a constraint in which, depending upon the number of kindergarten classes you have, you, I mean, the building doesn't get any bigger. So then it's a matter of where does one of those third-grade classes go? And how do we feel instructionally and developmentally that you might have one of your third-grade classes housed with a fourth and fifth-grade kind of cluster? So, you know, where do you try to look in trying to resource a number that isn't, that you don't want to versus getting other class sizes?
Well, we haven't had to encourage some movement between Summit and Hiawatha.
Yep.
So that's still an option.
And that's, that is always easiest when the brand-new family with a brand-new kindergartner moves in and you don't have sibling precedence and some other things. So that's a huge opportunity for us from now through. I mean, kindergarten registration doesn't start until April, March?
March.
March. So that will be a key element for us to know.
There's also room, this is going to be an unpopular thing to say probably, but as Fleming, even though we're not rehiring a retired teacher, we still could have a teacher move out of Fleming into another school if needed, with their numbers at Fleming. We've decided that we could riff actually at Fleming if we look at the class size policy. I would rather not do that because then if we do have a fluctuate in another grade, then we'd have to hire somebody. So I'd rather keep them and we've trained them. And so to keep them is better than letting one go and back and forth. And that's what happens with Fleming numbers a lot. They're always on that border to look, to see what we could do. So we've chosen to take that and not, the initial thinking was that we would let one, have to riff one teacher, more teacher at Fleming, or the retirement plus a riff. But we're not doing that. So we have a little room there.
And then it was asked before, what about the nine-twelve? And we use class size by content area projections here. The policy, the board policy is on the left-hand side and it goes through. Because this is a content, the content is sort of broken up into different types of courses and how those courses are. And then what the minimum, optimum, and maximum is. It gives a current breakdown and then a future projection. The difficulty here is it's not, it's not a similar progression kind of model of third graders going to fourth grade because we have a program of studies that students have the opportunity to choose from a variety of different options. And that registration for courses takes place after we're finishing the budget. But currently, as we went through this process, there wasn't identified any anticipation of risks or changes in that. So as we get into special education, this even is broader and kind of reaches into a whole series of areas, including eleven-hundred regular instruction. And like direct instruction, the expenses are weighted towards personnel. Approximately sixteen and a half million or so is in the personnel area. And the remaining five-point-eight million is in non-personnel. There's a number of these, the lion's share of these costs has become eligible and reimbursable expenses or are covered by directed and restricted dollars and included in service plan. I thought what I'd do is give a chance for Erin to kind of explain a little bit and contextualize special education here at EWSD so that we can have an appreciation for something that maybe we don't have a whole ton of interaction into.
I think first, just to share the data point that there are approximately six hundred students eligible for special education. We just counted, did a count. We're required to do that every December. And so that is a pretty fresh data point. And many, many of the dollars that are represented in this list of function codes, right, the different categories of expense, benefit those students. But I think it's important to know that we are constantly working to create ancillary benefit to other students as well in multiple ways. And so while these costs derive from a collection of individual plans, we, called IEPs, we also have systems of support that we use to deliver these services. And there are times where there are students who are not eligible for special education, who are participating in who are participating in, in groups and benefiting from these dollars. And so it feels important to note that. The other thing that I wanted to say about this overarching slide that shows you all of the categories of service is that we really do in, through the special education lens, try to come at this from two places. One is that all IEPs are individualized, they are designed for individual students. And sort of when you add all of those services up, you, you expend dollars to create those services. That's not to say though, that it's not also important to look from a systemic perspective. I think sometimes we, you know, it's hard to imagine, how, how would you do that? If they're all individual services and all of these plans? But we really do try to think about schools as well as the entire school district, creating pockets of expertise in particular areas to be able to deliver services. I could talk at length about each one of these and what that looks like across the school system. We don't have time for that tonight, but just wanted to provide you that information, both about the benefit that is provided to many students beyond the six hundred and then also that sort of bottom-up individual plan necessity as well as a systems approach for organizing these services across the school district. If there are any questions about those concepts? Everybody's clear about?
What does the social work services look like that we fund?
Sure, so, um, social work services are in all our schools. They are a, we partner with Howard Center and we use the benefit in Vermont of success beyond six dollars that are allocated through the Agency of Human Services to provide supports to young people in our state. And those dollars go to the designated agency, which is Howard Center. And we, we partner with them to provide some of the dollars necessary to provide social work from the success beyond six funds and then pair that with school district investment to be able to provide a high level of FTE in our school district of social work services, but at a much lower cost. So all of our schools have social workers and many of the schools have more than one. And we, we do, we do partner with them. It's also worth noting that special education can be submitted to, ultimately to the federal government through CMS, which is the entity that pays for Medicaid services. You can bill special education for reimbursement for Medicaid services, for Medicaid dollars, and we take those dollars and we reinvest them. That's going to come up again as we talk about the equity investment. But our social work services are paid for through those reinvestment funds almost entirely. So we pair the success beyond six funds with our Medicaid reinvestment funds to be able to provide that higher level of social work services in our schools. It's also worth noting that the police department now has an embedded mental health support built into their work. There are, I think, a couple in Chittenden County, the mental health professionals who are working side-by-side with the police department to support calls that are related to mental health. And that has been a real benefit to our schools as well. We're hearing lots of principals talk about the incredible support that's been able to be provided in a really challenging circumstance, either with a family or a child, where there's a, a challenge happening and that mental health support from the community being really embedded. I also think it's important to note as we talk about mental health that we also partner with several private clinicians in the area to support, to make sure that students have access to their counseling services often through their own families. But we partner and, and figure out sometimes some shared space or trying to make those services more available. That's an example of me talking about one particular area. Any others that people wanted to hear about? I think that it, it is also worth noting that we have been spending a great deal of time thinking about supports within first instruction. And while we made some pretty significant shifts in our service models over the first two years of the merged school district in special education, we're moving into this year without significant systems changes. We are providing a fair investment, a fair amount of investment in instruction to teachers as it relates to literacy intervention aligned with the first instruction efforts. We'll receive benefit from retirement in special education, similarly situated to the conversation Brian was having earlier. There is, there continues to be a support staff driver within the budget as it relates to individual support staff and paraeducators and individual assistance interventionists. Those are a series of titles we use to describe the different functions of these folks inside of our budget. We have approximately a hundred and seven students now who experience the need through their IEPs to have a one-to-one with them through their day. That's a really high number in, certainly nationally and something that we are digging into and thinking about as we go forward. But it, it certainly is important to note that it is a driver. We've had a, a large number of students move in with some pretty high needs too, so that's been taking place. We are moving from an occupational therapy service set that's been, it was initially fully contracted. This year it's been a blend of FTE and contracted services. We're moving to one hundred percent employee-driven service delivery system for occupational therapy that you'll see. And we also wanted to note that there will be about a seventy-five thousand dollar savings in the operational budget that is due to a one-time increase for technology replacements. We have students who use iPads for a number of reasons, some of which is actually to have a voice. And there are a number of these devices in our system that were very old. We added some money to the budget this year to replace those. That will come back out as well as really working to decrease some of the testing materials. We had a couple of tests we needed to invest in because those came out, that increased costs. So we had a decrease of about seventy-five thousand dollars in operational costs because of those shifts.
Those, those high points are the ones that are, that Erin just went through are here in numbers. And you can see the operational reduction in total with the, with the large reduction up in special ed that included some of the, the equipment repair. There's a total of about sixty-six thousand dollar reduction. Overall, the special education area and all these functions is going up approximately two point six percent, which is a, is a lower than, than past experience. You can see some of the budget to actuals where we were at eighteen-four to nineteen-six to twenty-one for this budget, now coming in at twenty-two.
So before we move to equity, are there any questions around special education?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna get this quickly. You, you talked about, a little bit about student transportation, but I'm seeing that the percentage increase here is almost sixty percent?
So one of the things that, and this goes to an example of how you'll see an increase in one place and a decrease in another. We had almost a full FTE, a full-time person dedicated in our office to managing transportation inside of the special ed office. And so you'll see that in twenty-four twenty under personnel. You see how that's gone down ninety-six or whatever that number is, yeah, uh, maybe ninety-eight. And then you'll see an increase in the student transportation. We actually took that person out of the administrative function of special education implementation and moved that individual over to Jamie Smith's office to be able to move transportation out of the special ed director's offices into transportation. And so it's a good example of where you'll see an increase in one place, but it actually came from another. Thanks for that question.
Yeah.
Both with regular education and special education and personnel, when will we be able to discuss sort of the impacts of the state health plan changes? Because like, it seems like, based on my reading of the summary, that like, it's gonna be a lot more impactful on our budget if we're like hiring part-time people than full-time people with the new thing? Like, is that something that will ever be digested before we have to pass a budget?
I, I'm not, I'm not sure where it's gonna stand by the time we have to pass the budget, honestly. I, I think that, you know, the, I believe the first workshop on the healthcare settlement takes place tomorrow. So, I mean, that's, that's just the timing where we're at. About two hundred school districts have had to pass a warning at this point in time for their budget. So the fact that we're trying to get information and we don't have to sign a warning until the end of February is sort of falling on deaf ears that we need this information because the vast majority of Vermont has just gone to, to vote for it. And it intersects, there's a bunch of what this means that is also gonna intersect in with discussions and parts of your negotiation and conversations with support staff and, and union and others because there's new definitions that have to be created. You know, if you recall, when the ACA passed, it created a new definition that a full-time employee was thirty hours for a lot of us, that, you know, became that eligibility. The idea that a full-time employee is seventeen and a half hours is, you know, just doesn't, it, it seems now we're disconnecting eligibility from full-time, which has a lot of ramifications in its own. But as we do that and we understand what the prorata is, the, you know, where the person has to do the share if they're at seventeen and a half, it's all from what point? And we consider full-time right now in our district to be between thirty and forty hours because we use the ACA cutoff. But you can't, that's a range. So when you try to figure out what's the, the prorated share cost at seventeen and a half hours, you can't divide number into range. So we have to, we have to come up with a new definition, we've never had one. So all of those have big impacts on what, what is going to be the ultimate cost. I, I think we'll have a better sense of at least the explanation of what this impact will be. And Deb can quickly do like she did first dollar impact and what that would mean. She did domestic partner impact and came up with something. But then we won't know, we're just guessing. You know, we're using right now a twenty percent uptake in domestic partners, it could be ten, could be forty.
I think Jamie's point of, of thinking about the, the part-time versus full-time as we look at special ed services is kind of important.
Well, I, I mean, just one more.
I know, sometimes you can't, it's what the IEP says, you know, you can't do anything about it.
There are very few part-time positions in special education in that, represented in that budget. I, I mean, I'd have to go into the system to look at exactly how many, but it's very few. Most everyone is full-time. Our system is big enough so that we're able to do that from that systems perspective. Doesn't mean that, you know, there are people who move across buildings or have different responsibilities across their day. But we, we definitely trend toward full-time employees opposed to part-time.
It would be in the, it would be in the more of the operations areas. And the other reality is, our labor market is already excruciatingly tight for those jobs. Even when we're at like twenty-five hours a week or twenty-eight hours a week, there's no way, you know, we, we wouldn't find a labor pool for fifteen-hour-a-week jobs. So it's really gonna be, what is, what is the attractiveness in that proration of benefits? That's gonna, and then what's that gonna mean for the uptick for it? And if you're eligible, you're eligible for cash and lieu. So which would be a prorated share of cash and lieu. So you, you basically, that everyone that's eligible could get some money. We have to figure out what that cost would be.
Todd?
Oh, I think I'm ahead.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Later tonight, when we finish up here, I'm gonna look for some board guidance as far as worst-case, best-case scenario, what should we start to bake in so that we can start to move as, as tax rates get calculated? We at least have some number to work from. So we'll see where the board sort of falls there. But Phil, here.
All right, so moving into equity investments, you all are aware that we have made some investments this year as it relates to equity, diversity, and inclusion work that the district has taken on. The, there is a, a definite recommendation to continue to move forward with this body of work, specifically around continuation of the multicultural help desk at Essex High School, investing in training through courageous conversations for beyond diversity training. We trained fifty-five educators this year and the feedback that we received when we collected feedback was beyond positive, probably the best feedback I've ever received on any training we've ever done. Really impressive. And so having a lot of requests for more of that, and so we want to make that recommendation. There have als- there have also been some conversations taking place about the need to do some curriculum audits, to think carefully about how students are and are not represented in curricular materials, making sure that our strategies of instruction are culturally sustaining as opposed to expecting assimilation of culture into a dominant culture. So there's some money in there specific to consultation and training around that. There, we really would like to continue down the conversation path of community dialogue and engagement as it relates to issues of equity and diversity. And there is a current conversation happening about the possibility of creating a contracted three-credit course potentially that would be available to teachers to continue learning as it relates to culturally sustaining pedagogies. So those are all investments we are recommending for this budget cycle. I want to give a moment of appreciation both to special educators as well as to our Medicaid clerks because, and those are the folks that send in sort of the receipt billing for the Medicaid dollars. We moved from six hundred and ten thousand dollars of Medicaid receipts to seven hundred and sixty last year. We, I don't, I don't have a number for you yet. This year, we're mid-year as it relates to those numbers. And in our conversations, it's our recommendation that we reinvest seventy-five thousand dollars of that into the equity diversity work. But also because this is such a prominent area of importance for our school district, it's a recommendation that we do situate thirty-four thousand of the hundred and nine thousand within the general budget, that we begin to see clear investment beyond other revenue streams into this body of work. So I wanted to offer an opportunity to answer any questions about this recommendation, entertain other thoughts. Hearing none?
Just thank you, Erin, this is great and this is, this is great. This, thank you for providing this information.
Thank you.
It is very exciting.
Yes, great, thanks for support, appreciate it.
We just gave you double the work, but.
Yeah, that's okay.
You're doing well. So, looking at an instructional leadership model, we had talked to you some last year and brought forth to the budget a third principal for, in the Essex Elementary and Founders, which you will see in a moment. Really looking at the DMG report that was done for Essex Westford or was done for Essex Town.
Really looking at the DMG report that was done for Essex Westford, or was done for Essex Town and CCSU, so prior to the merger is when the report was written. And we use that in so much of our planning and we used it to write our continuous improvement plan. And we're going back into it. We have a retreat with leadership team at the end of January and we'll go back into it. So, we do use it as a helpful guide. The research really is clear that it's about student outcomes more than anything else and it really relies on teachers' shoulders for those student outcomes. It doesn't, there's, for students who struggle, those both with and without IEPs benefit greatly from teachers who are highly effective and have a strong knowledge. It requires expertise. The way that we can do this is to provide them ongoing professional development and really look at those needs and what teachers need. So, we are inclusive and want all students in classrooms. It does require high-quality teaching to do that and to meet all needs of students. We're working hard with that. We know we have a long way to go. In our PLCs, it's definitely necessary so teachers meet with each other. The research set, says that teachers do need to meet with each other and they learn well from each other and they learn practices and they can talk about students and student outcomes in those PLCs. So, those we really wanna hang on to, and we will share more of that information with Jackie, will be with us next week and we'll go a little deeper into the PLCs and the work. But along with the PLCs, we need instructional leaders. Our principals need to be in classrooms often and as research says, giving feedback to instructional leaders. It is part of our professional growth model that we're doing and the principals are with me, taking an academy, really learning on how to give that feedback. So, to improve instruction, first instruction, it really takes an instructional leader constantly in classrooms. It takes peers as well, teachers seeing teachers teach, which would be another step. We're not diving into that next year, but, and that, that PLC is learning from each other. So, to have a helpful instructional leadership model, those are two things that are really needed. To be able to get into classrooms, we need some, we had to look at our numbers. So, first we'll look at EHS, the, the leadership model. On the left is what is currently happening. So, there is a principal who provides the overall leadership and management necessary. And then three assistant principals, which have all been focused on student behavior and the supervision and evaluation. So, they also get into teachers' classrooms. And then there's a dean of students and, dean of students and student activities who works with students to help them stay on track, to work with success, to keep those students on tracks, to make sure that they can continue in their extracurricular activities, which we also know are really important. So, when a student is slipping, the dean of students helps them to get back on. We have a director of guidance and a director of student support. In looking into twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty twenty-one, that's hard to say. A lot of twenties. We are, as you know, hiring a principal with Mr. Riordan retiring. That principal will be working with two assistant principals and those two focused on the student behavior and supervision and evaluation as well. One of the assistant principals will change focus, and this needs, is a hire because we have Louis Strong is retiring as an assistant principal. The shift in that focus is to hire somebody that has a strong instructional leader and that will be overseeing PLCs and guiding the work with curriculum here and also with assessments. They will still be an assistant principal and help out with behaviors when needed or with students when needed, but their main focus is to be in classrooms as a coach and working with teachers. And then the dean of students will stay the same and do the same work as been doing this year and some with the SEL. We, and Dylan will talk to you about SEL and our plan for the high school when he comes next week as well. So, the director of guidance will do their job and the director of student support. Any questions about that model and moving into the twenty twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty twenty-one. So, is that the, the same start date then for the principal and the assistant principal is a July one start date for both those positions?
Yes. We are posting that assistant principal in-house first, in, within EWSD because we feel we have some pretty strong teacher leaders that could step into that role. I'd like to see when an assistant principal can, when, can move up like that. I think it's a great opportunity for leadership within. It's a good way for growth.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Todd?
Sure. There was, on one of the previous slides, we talked about seventeen retirements in savings and then in the slide before this, we're talking about how important it is to have well-trained, I won't say seasoned, but experienced teachers. So, are you budgeting, you know, what are you have in mind when you're looking for replacement? Are we talking, you know, someone who's two years out of college, maybe someone who's a bachelor plus thirty? I mean, what?
It's the one that's the best fit at the time. I mean, so you can have an amazing person that's out and maybe student taught with us and then has received some of the PLC work. I was in PLC last Tuesday and we had students, two student teachers and I thought, that's pretty cool. So, it can come that way or you do need somebody that comes along and they may have been teaching five years somewhere else and wanna move into the bigger system. We don't have trouble finding people for EWSD. There's people that-
Right. I guess what I'm saying is how much of a hedge are you making in thinking you're gonna find savings? If, if you might end up hiring teachers who have more experience and therefore, you know, further down or on the-
We estimate the midpoint.
Midpoint, okay.
Yeah, which is, you know, partly through some of the collective bargaining, like, sort of like where we can max out. Also recognize it's quite a system actually required by, I think it's by law or by staple rule, the whole mentoring-
Yes.
Process. So, you know, any teacher that comes in as assigned a mentor, that a mentor has a stipend. So, every one of the new hires also has some of those costs. So, you know, we don't, we're, it's really the numbers. There's quite a bit of retirements this year, which would kind of make sense just where the age of our group is.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions on high school leadership? Okay.
So, looking at the K-five leadership model, when we look at data across Vermont and the schools and the number of principals they have, it's an average about three hundred students, some schools with two fifty, but not many, but most of them is three hundred plus that they have an assistant principal. Summit, we just, I just put the data there to show you our enrollment and with one principal. So, Summit Street Fleming and Westford, then the enrollment numbers and then one principal. Hayawatha, the same thing, has two hundred and eleven students. We have one principal. Essex Elementary and Founders Memorial, when we brought that to you last year with the three principals for an enrollment of eight hundred and eleven students, that's a lot of kids. And the three principals we felt would be, and we know, will be more effective than each building having an assistant principal, which their numbers show that definitely could happen. This is a savings, but it also gives us top people within that. I will talk in a little bit about where we are with that search as well. Yes.
Can I just ask, if you look outside Vermont, what the practices are? Like, how many students per principal?
There's actually less when I look outside. I did look within New England. I looked into Maine. I looked into Massachusetts. The numbers are less for having an assistant principal. They were more in the two hundred range.
Interesting.
Yeah.
What?
There's also many larger systems too, but when I looked at the smaller schools.
So, um, school quality standard says something around this. I don't remember exactly.
I think that falls within the school quality standards. I don't remember the exact number either. I actually think it's three hundred. I would have to look for that for sure. Might be two eighty.
And before you go too far, the Essex Middle enrollment is actually four twenty-eight.
This is a, this is-
Oh, just kidding, sorry. Oh, no, you can go to the next slide. Yeah, the Essex Middle School is four twenty-eight, not two eleven.
Oh, you know what? I didn't switch that.
It got copied and pasted. Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Yes, it is. It is. That's way too small. I'm, I apologize. I, if you could fix that right now, Brian, it'd be amazing. Sorry. So, when we look at the six-eight leadership model, last year it was brought, you know that ADL has an assistant principal. One was hired last year. When one left our system, we hired one to replace. Essex Middle School, people questioned that when we were hiring a third principal for Founders and Essex Elementary. And I did say that wasn't a priority at that time, that that would be the focus that, this year. So, there's the focus, but it's not two hundred and eleven. So, that position right now, instead of an assistant principal, it's a, the, that position right now is a dean of students and it's a non-licensed administrator. So, they do a lot of the administrative work, but the principal has to then oversee every decision, basically, that's made. So, there really is a need for a licensed principal, assistant principal in that building. So, we will be looking for that shortly after it came here. Now, we'll be posting it. There, there is a need there. Thank you, Brian. Sorry. Good catch.
That was the Easter egg.
So, just to recap, we are continuing to look for the third principal for EMS and Founders.
We're in the middle of a search.
And this budget-
EES.
Pardon?
Yes, and Founders.
I'm sorry. Essex Elementary.
You said EMS.
This budget contemplates adding the assistant principal at Essex Middle School and the dean of student designation there. That will go away.
Correct.
Right. Whoever's filling that role won't either be back to a classroom or something else.
Right. It's up to that person, but yes. There's not much of a difference to increase a budget between that and this position.
Right.
So, it is rolled into the budget.
Todd?
What's the guidance in the SEL staffing at both of the schools?
It's the guidance and SEL. So, there is an SEL coach that is shared between the two of them. They have social, uh-
They have a, they have a BCBA, that, a board certified behavior analyst that's shared between them as well as a social emotional learning coach that's shared between them, Albert DeLaughton and Essex Middle School. I believe Essex Middle School has two school counselors.
Currently.
Currently has two.
Two and Howard.
And, and then there's a, and then there's a Howard Center clinician. I talked about the social workers. So, that position is there as well.
ADL?
ADL is one guidance counselor?
Uh, I think it's one point six, maybe. I think there's a part-time. It's not quite two full-time, but I'd have to look specifically. There is a, a point eight social worker position, so that's a four-day-a-week position at ADL. And then they share the SEL coach and the, the board certified behavior analyst between the schools as well. So, there's a point five, point five for each of the schools.
Is there a need for one in each?
The board certified behavior analyst? The, the, the IEPs do not call for that level of service. So, the BCBAs are actually providing oversight to interventionists and applying ABA programming, which is Applied Behavior Analysis Programming, through IEPs specifically. So, you can actually calculate the amount of service necessary for BCBAs and interventionists by looking at that data. And right now, that data does not support the need for additional BCBA. If we're talking about sort of overarching support as it relates to general behavioral support for a school, that's more within the SEL coaching framework. School counseling, I think is the right question to ask there as well. So, and then, and I do think that that is part of the thinking behind an assistant principal too, at the school.
It just seems like, given the age of the population, the numbers, that it's still a little thin, I guess.
Do you want to suggest we put up another SEL?
Yeah.
There's a lot happening at that age.
Yeah.
There is a lot happening at that age, absolutely.
So, we're gonna be talking about all of that with Dylan next time. So, maybe a further conversation when Dylan's here would be good.
Just thank you, Todd.
So, range of tax impact, for discussion purposes only. So, what I've taken is the current draft as it stands right now of all our revenue and all our expenses. Many, probably about forty, fifty percent of which we've covered some in these two presentations. And I've also included in the board portal, a line item breakdown by object code. So, what we are doing is trying to give some context to the board of where, what's the big picture look like and how invested, you know, what, how invested should I be in this? Or do we need to go in another direction? The two big ones is I still need to validate some of the special education revenue. The state information just hasn't been forthcoming, so, and it, so it creates some risk for us when we start to look at what our net ed spending is. If some of those numbers are off, you know, for instance, the reimbursement for special ed is right now budgeted about seven point five million. So, a little plus or minus on a number that big can have an impact to our, to our net ed spending. So, I'm still working to validate that and it is a difficult task to do. And then the final implications on the statewide healthcare. But I wanna give you a sense of where this is. So, what I've done is put together a draft with, and you'll see it in a second, with none of the healthcare in and then with the most likely of the healthcare in and with the worst-case scenario of the healthcare in. Now, we're using a, an initial number of eight hundred, so, you know, the, the secret behind the curtain is that most likely is we know that that's an annualized cost and we'll only absorb about half of it. So, my most likely right now is four hundred thousand dollars of additional costs. My worst-case scenario is eight hundred thousand in the first year. And I feel like that's covering all the bases of extra uptick in people taking benefits and also what we might have to do with regards to increasing hours. Because there's some of these people that, you know, if, if they're getting benefits for nearly eighty-eight percent or eighty percent copayment, we might as well get more labor hours. I mean, they've, they've had those labor hours intentionally at twenty-nine and a half for a purpose of savings. So, what we-
Make sure that everyone understands we need to only be budgeting half the cost for FY twenty-one because the changes don't start till January of two thousand and two. I just wanna, okay, good.
So, I just, before I go on, I just wanted to make sure everybody remembered that this was our roll-forward example. Nothing changes whatsoever with our local decisions, our budget, our educational spending. But because of changes in our equalized pupil, changes in our incentive and changes within our CLA, we're looking and we start, we started this process looking at those thirty percent of our community that pay just based upon their property in Westford would see a five percent increase and about a two and a half percent increase in EJ in town. So, if we take a look at this range of impact, the first one is the draft as it currently stands right now. And, you know, it is a draft. We may come, there may be tweaks and changes and through the, this work, you can highlight things that we need to improve. But we have this come down and you can see that the current budget is coming in really responsible. It's coming in at one and a half, one point six percent total ed spending change. Last year was one point eight eight. So, it's coming in as a really responsible budget. And then we start to come down. You can see that this tax rate right here, the homestead tax rate, before we start messing around with what happens with a declining incentive rate, we're seeing that coming in at about a quarter of a percent. But it gets multiplied when we start to come down and look at now a lower incentive rate and a higher CLA. And we start looking at a- And we start looking at a six point eight and a four point one, or about ten cents to the property tax, or about six and a half cents.
Right, but the part that we have control over is the, the one point something, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the fact that people's houses are worth more is not something the school budget should be built on, in my opinion.
Well, especially if, if we've been a small part in contributing to that property value growth. So, here's the draft with healthcare settlement in it, the most likely. Basically, I take what the current draft is, um, increase it by four hundred thousand dollars and run through. And you can see now we're jumping up into a tax rate that's increasing. This is the key line here that minimizes, you know, a lot of what then happens with C L A and the incentive rate. And we're still under a one percent increase in tax rate. And then here's the worst-case scenario, eight hundred thousand dollars added to the draft budget. And we come down, and it's a one and a half percent increase into the tax rate. Then it begins to start to escalate because of the decline in, in the merger incentive in the C L As. This number here is key to look at, this income sensitivity yield, because that's about seventy percent of the population will come in with some amount of income sensitivity. And so, you can see those are much more modest increases in comparison to people paying just upon their property homestead value.
Why on homestead tax rate, and we put...
A number in the blue. Why does it increase as you go across? Cause wouldn't the homestead tax rate be what the state values?
No, the homestead tax rate is a factor of the yield. So, based upon your ed spending per equalized pupil into the yield creates a homestead tax rate because the yield in a perfect world would create a one dollar, and then it starts off from there. So, each time we are increasing our net ed spending, dividing it into our equalized pupil number, we create a different ed spending per equalized. And then that still relates to the same yield amount, which creates a new homestead tax rate.
Brian, could you remind us what the projected increase in ed spending was across the state? You don't even have ed spending on here, do you?
No, that, that, you know, so that, it, that is not a number that anyone is required to report, though they reported in the process of trying to say why these are the yields and why these are the homestead tax rates. And they also reported sometimes to put pressure on, I think the number, if I recall, was said that if it's this, then, then there's gonna be a six percent increase in property taxes across the state. We should be getting a number, I would say, we should be getting a number as early as this week because the, some of the early budget collections, you know, the state, the A O E is collecting them so that it can go back to the legislature. So, we're gonna probably start to see this weekend to next week, a collection and estimate of where do school budgets look like they're going this year?
I don't usually see that till February.
Yeah, before town meeting, it's...
Well, for sure.
Yeah.
Vazbo might be, no, Vazbo just happened. So, kinda going back to this, I mean, my recommendation would be to start to cover our exposure with the healthcare settlement with, right now, some of our most likely, somewhere around four hundred thousand dollars. It, it's quantifying a reasonable, some, set of assumptions that have brought us to an eight hundred thousand and then kind of narrowed that down to being a half a year's experience. And then I think as we go on for the next couple of weeks, and more information comes out about it, and Deb continues down the path of negotiations, and we start to look at definitions, which will be really key to our final impact, uh, we can always sort of make some adjustments coming back into the budget before warning it on the, at the end of February. Sound like a, some, something that would be supported by a revised guidance? Administration to use approximately four hundred thousand dollars to account for the exposure of the new settlement? Okay.
Questions, comments? Yeah?
Uh, I'd love to go back to the previous presentation to review some numbers and think about the implications of those numbers going forward. Uh, one of the ones had to do with the fund balance carryover, which was F Y twenty-three point eight five mil, twenty-one two point seven mil. Now, in the past, we haven't run, I don't recall, carryover numbers that were that high. So, and we have a very sharp accounting system and an excellent operating manager or officer here, so...
Well, I agree with all that latter.
So...
I think you read it just as I wrote it.
Yeah. So, why can't we, uh, run a, a much leaner carryover balance?
Well, I, I, I mean, I think that the, I mean, we spent a long time talking about the carryover balance going into F Y twenty, talking about how that went all the way back into the legacy districts, it went into, um, and we sort of line item detailed down what some of the larger parts and pieces were, including transportation not being executed and so forth. Um, I mean, I think in, in a budget that, if we pass this budget right now, this is about eighty-two million dollars worth of budget capacity, um, that I would think that, you know, we would want a, a two percent kind of make sure, cause deficits are never what we want. So, you know, we're looking at eight hundred and sixty to one point six million kind of being a pretty tight ship.
Yep.
And then depending upon drivers, like if we have a big uptick going in between now and then in cash and lieu, and all of a sudden, we're returning an extra three hundred thousand for health insurance premiums, then that's gonna move us up to, now we're at two million. And so, that's how I think, I think we're gonna, as I gave that presentation a year ago, I said that I think our zone is gonna be more in that two and a half million dollar mark. But as we tighten things up, then it's gonna become responsible for us to make sure that we're ma- managing it really tightly. You know, as we take room out of assumptions.
Kim?
I mean, non-executed transportation is still a major component from the fund balance.
Yep.
Cause last year, we budgeted a lot more for transportation than we spent.
In the F Y...
I think we also have to remember that you don't want major fluctuations in fund balance because, especially if your fund balance is declining, that just pushes up tax rates. So, it's a catch twenty-two. Did you have a second question?
Well, the other question had to do with the C L, the referral rates, and how well the existing C Ls...
We're having a presentation.
Are being...
So, we're having a presentation on C L next Tuesday, okay?
Go for it, Data and Dylan. And Dylan.
And Dylan and Data.
And Data.
Dee Dee. Other questions or comments on tonight's presentation?
And I just wanted to show, I think that this will meet a number of people's sort of hopes to be able to see a, a line item detail with variance reporting, uh, for each item to the side. Um, I have no intention of doing something like this during a session. Um, I, you know, I, I think I've covered why that doesn't make a lot of sense inside a governance element and also why we work on an appropriations budget and not a line item budget. So, this isn't a municipal budget where each one of these lines is restricted for that purpose, so... Um, but I know that there's interest to see this type of detail and to see the explanation. So, I'll be building out the variance analysis for all the expense accounts. And if somebody says, boy, I'd like to see this in a different way, then that can contribute to the work and we can just add more, um, workbooks and sheets to it.
So, how did you get to that?
So, right on this twenty-one budget, it's right on here, F Y twenty-one proposed budget, line item detail, object level.
Okay.
I do have one question. With regards to, um, the difference in offsetting revenues, i- I, some of that's attributable to our student declination, um, student lesser population, but we're also experiencing some because of our transportation. We didn't actually spend what we said we were gonna spend.
So, off...
It's a two-year...
Yep, it's a two-year average.
Right, so, going back in year one, we had budgeted X dollars, but I don't think we actually expended X dollars.
So, our, our growth of our reimbursement doesn't match some of the growth of our, our executed costs?
Or, or not, not, I wouldn't call it growth, but I know in the first years of, um, being a new district, we were trying to do transportation for all, and we budgeted transportation for all, but we actually didn't realize that because we didn't have drivers, et cetera.
They don't reimburse us on our budget.
Yeah, only a- actual expenditures. So, is that possibly a contributor to the...
Yeah, we're actually seeing a small, we're projecting a small increase in our transportation reimbursement because our two-year average is starting to grow.
Okay, okay.
Um, and, um, so, we're starting to see some of that. It's modest, it's not, it's not a huge offset.
We're seeing ultimately three hundred thousand less revenue.
Yeah. We also have a lot of offsetting revenue, like our I D E A money, our Title I money, our Title III money, which is all related. And in that, in that variance report, you can see where I've identified that, you know, where our funding source is tied directly to expenses. So, there's a net impact to it. And if we got less revenue, we'd cut expenses. If we get more revenue, we do a budget adjustment.
Now, is this budget forecasting lunches for all?
Nope.
No, it is not, so we have not changed that model, okay.
We continue the practice in which we turn no one away and we just, um, absorb the delinquency.
Sure.
One other, go ahead, Todd.
I just wanted to, is it, okay, if, between now and next week, if, if staff sees a, a need for a potential additional C L, so each of the middle schools has one, can you come with a potential cost? Yeah?
Okay, questions or comments?
A follow-up question. On the health benefits, two hundred and twenty-three employees taking cash and lieu. How many of, uh, I realize husband and wife may work here, but how many other policies, health policies held by employees within the district? The two twenty-three...
So, how many of those cash and lieu are represented by a s- that has a spouse taking insurance?
No, uh...
The other way?
The other way.
That it's just a cash and lieu and that they're being insured somewhere else? I can, you know, we can just run a, a basic, uh, elimination of spouse dupes and then see what that number is. We, we can't be absolutely...
What it's the number of employees that are taking regular premiums that are... How many premiums do you actually pay for?
We have six hundred and seven subscribers. And then, then, so that, that, that's the number of people we insure that are employees. And then the number of dependents is, is partly on if, if they're a family, a parent-child, a two-person plan.
That six oh seven is the...
And that's a number that varies, that's the last census. I was just looking at the last census, so, six oh seven, it can vary up and down.
So, the six oh seven is covering the eight million? Okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah, the eight million of premiums, yes. And the H R A is associated with that six oh seven.
So, the cash and lieu of accepting, um, healthcare, that is if it's, uh, acquiring healthcare outside the district? Or is, for instance, where I'm going with the question, if we have spouses that work here, does one will take the family plan, but the other spouse will get the cash and lieu?
I believe our, uh, collective bargaining agreement doesn't allow for that.
Does not allow, it's, it's, but does it allow them to take a single-person plan?
Um, I'm not sure if there would be any exclusion. I had to go into, the master agreement would be the first place that I would look...
Sure.
To see if there is, if that's, is stated or if it's silent.
So, this is more in, in place where they're deriving health insurance outside the district and therefore...
And they must, they must provide proof of coverage, or they have to be covered by us.
And then the provision, if that health insurance disappears, then there's life-changing events that allow them to re-enroll outside the enrollment period?
We don't pay this, we don't pay the cash and lieu in lump sum because we know that events can occur.
Okay, so it's pro-rated over time?
Changes and stuff like that.
Okay.
Pay it over time.
Are we set with budget? Okay, let's move on to policy governance implementation planning. Beth, do you want to talk about this?
Sure, so, um, Martha, Patrick, and Kim, and I met about the next steps for the policy governance. Um, we reached out to Val Gardner to see her available time, which would be, we're looking at April to do that. Um, Val did suggest if we could do a retreat, so it would be longer than a meeting, would be a good way to get a chunk of the learning done, um, that we could look for some dates that everybody would be available. I don't know if that would be a Saturday morning or an early afternoon into a evening or whatever, we can, um, talk about that. But Val is willing to move forward with us. We also discussed, Kim did in the reach-out to Val, at, if there's a point at which the board decides this isn't the correct way to go, then it would be fine to back, um, off from continuing. But Val would work with us, um, in implementation. So, that would be this spring. Um, and a retreat is a good way to start off, kick it off, and get a lot of the learning done and then other consecutive, um, some board meetings.
Um, would this retreat be occurring after seating a new board member?
Well, that's what we, that would be the best way to do it, yes.
Not, could we video it for their...
Yes, that's, yes, yes.
Good point. Yep, so, I think, you know, Kim wanted me to emphasize it's that Val is aware that we have had a close vote. And so, assuming we contract with her through V S B A, she will be doing it in steps where we can partner and evaluate as we move along. Okay? All right, um, task team updates, Liz?
Yeah, so, um, our team met last week and, um, gonna go through these bullets. They, the, which are also in our board package. But, so the, the budget mailer will, we decided we, we'd use the same categories as last year. Um, Ben is working to make sure that information is all accurate for the flyer and working on a new t- template this year, just so it looks new and exciting each year that we receive it in our inboxes, our, at mailboxes. Um, and we will be, are, working on it on our next task team meeting, which is on February sixth. We will be looking at the design and may ha- and taking any comment and feedback and bringing that to the board, um, before it gets mailed out. Uh, do you want me to go through... Uh, do you want me to go through all, or take questions on each bullet, you wanna go, have ma- mailer questions, or go?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, the budget mailer, will that have, um, information on, um, tax, tax rates? And I think the reason I'm driving that question is, uh, I know that that's captured throughout our meetings, and we have quite a bit of an audience here, as well as the regular informational meeting, but if we're reaching out with a budget mailer, why couldn't we not put that type of information so that people that choose not to attend or went for out of reason haven't made available to them?
Do, Martha, do you wanna talk about that at all, or, I, I-
So, so the flyer is just general information about the budget and when the vote is, I think it's important to remember that we don't vote on tax rates, we vote on the budget. Um, I think we talk about links to where people can find, um, all the budget information, and it's certainly on the links, there isn't a lot of room on the flyer, I mean, it, it's not flyer, it's a postcard, but with the, um, um, a large-size postcard, um, so, in, in the past, we have not included tax rate implications, we could put an asterisk and say, for task projected tax rate implications go here, so that if people had that particular interest, it would be clear where to go. Kelly?
I guess, just speaking from a sort of (sigh) public relations perspective, um, we have a limited amount of trust capital with our community, and we can keep people's trust by telling them things that are true.
Right.
And if we tell them things and they turn out not to be true-
Right.
-then we lose the trust of the community, and I think that it's a bad situation to put ourselves in that position when we don't control the thing that we're saying. Like, if I was gonna say, you know, Al is going to have lunch at Firebird Cafe next week-
I'll do it.
Because I thought you probably were, but then you decided not to, like, then I'd be putting myself out there about something that I didn't have control over.
Right.
And the other thing to keep in consideration is, um, the numbers for tax rate that are talked about so much, like, only apply to a minority of people in the community, so, like, if there were a website that opened up the black box of income sec- sensitivity so that we could all figure out what rate actually means for me, I would love to direct people to that site, I would love to make the video that clarified that, but I haven't, I haven't figured it out yet, so, I know I'm not paying the number that we're seeing up there, I just don't know what number I'm gonna be paying.
Right.
I appreciate the brevity of the mailer-
Right.
-and understand that, but yet, we're talking about that at, during these budget meetings, and also at the informational meetings, and there's, I'd say that's a fair statement, a lot of folks may or may not go to these categories because of, uh, for various reasons, but if you have it in hand, then you can dissect that information more readily than being steered towards, well, you go to this website, go to that website, some folks may not feel, may not do that, or whatever, so again, I'm gonna advocate that I would feel more comfortable seeing that information mirror what we're presenting at each and every budget meeting in the same manner, as well as their informational meeting. When we project it, we don't have the actuals, which I understand, since we don't, we may or may not have the actuals, but to give them some semblance of what the expectations will be, or impact on their taxes, I, I think it's meaningful to have that on the mailer.
Right, and we could add a disclaimer to, uh, that it's the best estimate at the time, and-
And hold that-
That's the best estimate at the time for thirty percent of the community.
Right.
Right.
Right, and that, that's what's so hard, because particularly in Westford and rural part of Essex, nobody pays completely on either, so.
And a lot of people don't even open their tax bills. Seriously.
What do you mean?
Do you go with escrow? Oh. They don't even open their tax bills.
No.
Yeah, it's true.
Well, I, I know my experience, animated discussion as to when they're gonna run the analysis.
We have had a practice, and it may change based upon how you guys wanna shape it, but we've had a practice of publishing that information in our annual report, but we've also had a practice of being completely wrong, the last two years we've published it in the annual report, because the legislature completely changed-
Right.
-some of the base amount, the yield, so, equalized people was also wrong last year, because we continued to receive the change. So, some of that, I mean, I, I think there, we have a, a history now of almost four years in which school boards have been responsible for educating the broad public on very complicated ed financing nuances, and almost always being responsible for delivering a tax rate that is higher than the eventual tax rate that is passed by the legislature in Montpelier, and people don't even know it. They walk away with that sentiment that they have, the first time they look at the flyer and they say, I can't believe this, and they never go back and email us, you know, in, when they get their tax bill and say, hey, this is like five cents less than I thought. This is awesome.
You get to email if it's five cents higher. Sorry, but, I, I guess.
Okay, so-
I think the thing is, is as the tax rates increase, you, you don't wanna surprise the public with, uh, an unplanned, a high tax bill, and it, I, I think it's, I'm personally, I'm feeling like we should be transparent to the best of our ability with the public that, that an increase is coming, but it's invested in the right areas, and here's why that investment is recommended, and I think people will understand and relate to that. I'm more concerned about the surprise of a, of a much larger bill and not having-
I don't, you know, talking about much larger bills, unless the worst-case scenario of healthcare happens, so, um, and we, yeah, um-
I think one of the things that's-
When do we traditionally send out that mailer in March, right?
Yep.
Right.
But it needs to be designed now, I, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this, so, um-
I just wanna point out that we have been delivering higher tax rates because of the CLA.
Right.
So, so the idea that, wait a minute, taxes have been going down for the last three years, the Burlington Free Press number has always been reported that the taxes are going up, but that's, that has been exclusively by this chart shown to be a factor of the CLA, not a factor of the local decisions.
I feel like the honest disclaimer would be something like, property values are rising. This means that people with incomes over whatever the cutoff is for paying solely on property may see tax increases of up to X percent, and that would be true, and yet it would be totally unhelpful to most of the people in the community, and sound scary.
Yeah.
So, I don't wanna say that.
I think you have to translate CLA into real world, that, that houses, your neighbor's house is selling for much higher rates, and, and relate that, somehow there's a story there that needs to be told.
And I think we could tell that story in articles in the Essex Reporter, we can tell that story in the annual report, I don't think you can adequately tell that story on a postcard that's this size.
And I, I absolutely agree, and maybe we can move forward and get back to that piece after, but move forward to the engagement plan that, that the team came up with that could help too, because if you scroll down and see that one thing we came up with was an idea that we've been talking about along, for a long time, which is to get out into the community with, uh, a- as board members, and just be present at existing community events that we know are well-attended by our, um, by everyone in, in our community, so some of these events we came up with were, um, you can see, there are five of them, them, there are twelve board members, we are, we can, um, the idea would be to have a team set up with, um, we thought handouts, we're welcome to whatever handouts you might think are good ideas, one of them might be something around tax implications, something that we can come up with to really be out in the community providing information about this, in a way that's not, this is just a draft, I'm not gonna pass it around for review, but this is, remember, these is what it looks like, and, and this is the room on, on the card, we're tr- so, I personally like keeping it to the information we've done for the past couple of years, but I think that getting more information into the community and doing it in more ways than we've tried before is, is face-to-face with handouts that people can take away with them, with information, so, um, so the ones we came up with, you can see the dates, I called the high school today, that fine arts night, what's that?
Village meeting is too late, right?
Village meeting is too late, so, but, but we thought, just to get into the habit of going to our, our town and village meetings and have a ta- table there for, um, even if it's just the third bullet, which is to get, gather the information, uh, from people about what do, what do people wanna hear about, what ideas do they have for, for us that we could talk about as a board for engagement and getting out in the community, and really hearing from people about what they want to, um, see and hopes and dreams, that kind of thing. And then the idea would be to take what we hear, to be able to hand out information and give people the information that they're seeking when they come to these events about their schools, and also gather a little bit of data that could help us plan for what an engagement would look like in May, um, what, and really start to feel like a dr- that we can be responsive to what people say they want to. This is in draft form, we're gonna work on this more on our February sixth meeting, um, these might not be the right events that we picked, and the timeline might be not right for, um, for getting the information out, so we can look at what other, um, what other opportunities there are for, for doing that, um, yeah, Diane?
I know that the SLIP board and the village trustees are going out to the various winter sporting games-
Yeah.
-over the next two months.
Yeah.
And they have their schedule posted on their, their, um, meeting agendas, meetings, stuff, and so it's already, they, they already recognize that.
And our legislators are going out and doing community coffees, like, we really know that going out to where people are is, is a really effective way in our communities to, to start building those relationships that are so important, and to provide that two-way street where we can give information and receive more about, and, at, you know, that, so, um, that being said, and if we circle back to the, to the mailer, I personally feel really comfortable, um, if we're providing the information in so many other ways, and y- uh, people who don't have access to the websites, most people do have access to a phone, and you can call the central office and get all of this m- um, information also delivered in physical form too, so I do think for transparency and accountability, the district is doing a lot to get this information out, and, and e- and even more than last year, which I thought was good, I think the way it's laid out on the website and the availability of all of the, all of, all of the information in a really easy and accessible way, um, is really effective, and, and does meet our goal of, of doing what we, what we, what we need to do by way of engaging our community around the budget.
You didn't put that EBL basketball?
I didn't, we talked about it, uh, um, but, so, yeah, I don't know, do you want to say date of that? Anyway, the, the-
February vacation, the, leading up to it, starting the third day.
It's a little hectic in there, I don't know, but, but anyway, um-
It's busy.
There's all kinds of, there's all kinds of, Sandra's laughing, it is totally hectic, but, yeah, that's-
It's nuts, but hey, what the hell?
And, and maybe, and so if people do, if we like this idea, and if people have ideas of, of things that are happening, and we wanna look at those, and, and maybe next meeting we can talk about, you, uh, a sign, having, I can set up a sign-up sheet that we can send around between meetings, just if we, um, if we like this, and again, if we wanna pick some better events, um, and if the board wants to, to, to try to get out this budget season and, in advance of, of all of this, and do that, um, we can try that, uh, so.
Yeah, the idea being, we haven't been able to get as many people to come to us as we want, so we can go to things where we already, probably we're already going to our own town meetings and stuff.
Yeah.
And we know that other people will be there too, so.
Great.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, nope, and that's it, then we're, we are gonna try to do some more information about letting people know how to run for office and open, and what the schedule is for board seats, and we're gonna just try to have a little bit focus more on member recruitment for the board, and what, what, what it looks like to run. Um, and yes, one other thing for communications, I just wanted to, um, to say thank you to the EWSD Child Nutrition for the Gather at the Table event, and for all, everyone who made it and could be there that night, I know there were several board members, lots of, there, there was legislators, there were, there, we served, our estimate is close to five hundred dinners, somewhere between four hundred and seventy and five hundred meals that were, um, really well-received, the menu and the, um, this, the, the, and there were three and a half hours, thank you to, um, EJRP and Essex Parks and Rec, there were three and a half hours of supervised activities in the gym, and, um, it was a really positive and, and wonderful night for the community, so I just wanted to give a big thanks for that.
Good job.
Wonderful, yeah.
Yeah, she could've been there. Okay, um, Kim isn't here.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, she does, she just gave me a statewide update to, to, that I can share.
Well, okay, wait, I was gonna, we'll do that in a second.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Um, is there anything you would wanna say about negotiations?
No.
You have maybe-
We met with teachers, we had a conversation, we exchanged, um, like narrowing in on the articles we'll work on, and we meet with the support staff coming up in February, but-
Okay. All right, superintendent report?
Sure, so, January is School Board Recognition Month, so thank you for all your hard work, and hopefully you have your darn tough socks on order.
I got mine for sure.
I'm gonna be a school board member to get darned on.
No, it's really- I got mine too, I got mine too.
And the link all worked this year, I know last year there were a few issues, but-
Last year, I-
It was great.
That letter, but I did this.
Well, congratulations and thank you for all the work you do in supporting EWSD, you help our vision come alive, thank you. So, the, I, my report is really reporting out on my superintendent's goals, as you know, and the first one, in closing the achievement gap, um, the focus was looking at teachers as the most important school-based factor for student achievement, and working through PLCs with that, and then the principal working through the Leadership Academy, um, and my responsibility is, um, working with the systems and structures to support PLCs and to support principals in the Ed, um, Instructional Leadership Academy. We have created a system for monitoring student learning, um, in those continuous improvement outcomes, which I shared with you, the data map that we'll begin in March and starting to look at that data, first, that data goes to the directors of instruction, which is Erin and Dylan, um, myself and Jackie, we look through that data, it will be brought to leadership team and then brought to the board, so that, in that rotation. So, that's evidence for that goal in closing the achievement gap, and also my report, or my presentation to all of you as well, and looking and preparing for the budget and sharing some literacy data and where we're at with that, and wanting to close the gap with literacy. Um, January seventh, we were with, uh, I was with principals in the Instructional Leadership Academy, and Dylan and Jackie are in that also, Erin has so much going on that she couldn't join us, but another year will continue thus, and we have some new principals being hired, so we probably will enter it again, they are looking forward to, um, doing the same training in Vermont as well, and expanding it to different parts of the state, it is going very well, last time we were together, we, uh, focused on student talk and the important, and the importance of that in a classroom, um, and teacher practices that lead to that work, and then as, um, administrators, what do we look for when we go into a classroom for productive student talk, and then how to give feedback, so that training has been really beneficial and great conversations, we end- We, and we go to Colchester Middle School next Monday to do our walkthroughs with them. They are in our same cohort, so there's a bunch of us that go through. That'll be fun to see another school. And then goal two is the positive internal and external relationships through effective collaboration and communication. So I continue to provide the bi-weekly newsletters that Ben puts out and administrators write in those as well. And we get information out to the staff and as well as the community. I am starting to schedule teacher forums to get input on the professional growth model. So I'll meet in March, throughout March, I'll meet, go to each school and have a forum with teachers to gather feedback on how that's going with the professional growth model. And, and I do that right along with the principals and we make adjustments as we go. They're in the middle of, what's the next goal? But they're in the middle of, teachers are submitting their mid-year, I was going to say midlife, mid-year reflections right now. There is, I didn't put it in this report, but the student retreat that Erin has facilitated to, facilitated to make happen on Friday, I was, just received an email by the student president to meet with me after that, to talk about student voice and the outcomes of that. And I also asked to include Laura and Tilly in that conversation. So be expecting an email and a date of when we can sit down with students from that retreat to discuss ways of implementing student voice and what things that they want to see happen at EHS. So that's really exciting. I was honored to receive an email from the president. And goal three is working with all of you and the governance and the evidence of that is reaching out to Val and doing that work. And I actually already reported that to you in the next steps. My, the goal four is around the newly created supervision and evaluation. And again, I'll do those teacher focus forums, which will gather feedback and then looking, working with a committee to make changes or adjustments to that. The overall phases will be there, but it's maybe some adjustments will be needed. I continue to walk, work with principals on walkthroughs and then that, through my one-on-one principal meetings and school visits. And then also we do the principal grade level meetings, which we talk about the supervision and evaluation and giving feedback. Goal five was more around the budget process and making sure that things are aligned for the system of growth and student achievement, which the literacy presentation shares with you what we're putting into the budget. And Jackie will be here next week to also present what we're doing with that literacy budget and how we will move forward with that in the budget and next year and the work that we have ahead of us. So instructional directors update, I did not put this in here because it wasn't public news yet as I was writing this, but the Director of Technology and Innovation has been hired. His name is Peter Drescher. He's, comes from, he's the, currently, right now, the Director of Technology at the Agency of Education in Vermont. So we have a very qualified person joining our team, which we're really excited about. He brings lots of knowledge and experience. He's a national presenter and obviously has worked throughout the state in bringing lots of great ideas and knowledge with him. It'll be, Peter Drescher. It'll be an adjustment from him to come from a state level to a school level, but we'll be here to support him as he works through those challenges. February seventeenth is his start date and we're really excited to bring him in again. That'll be a position that will be under the Instructional Director. So he will be meeting with us on a regular basis with Erin and Jackie and Dylan and I as we move the system forward and really, when we really focus in on data and continuous improvement plan. So that's exciting. Director of Learning and Instructional Impact, Jackie has been working with the Buck Institute. If you do some research on that, it's a national group that works with project-based learning. I've done a lot of work with them in the past and it's a phenomenal organization. So we have some of the project-based learning happening at EWSD, which is exciting. Winter assessments have been happening, ready to close that window. Report cards go out this week, the progress reports for the K five. Federal grants, finally, an approval. We had some adjust, adjustments and finally the final submission is completed. And in time to start with our next continuous improvement plan, which will start by looking at that DMG report again during our retreat and starting to plan for next year, maybe shifts in our continuous improvement plan to submit that grant again, which will be soon. And we will discuss with you, we're asking for a different kind of funding system with that and we're asking for a waiver from the state so we can use that money in a different way and to support our vision. But we will come back to you with that. With the PLCs, we're still working on the viable curriculum. The literacy standards are, have been determined. People are now working on math standards and they should be completed, I would say by the end of January. Maybe one more meeting in February and they should, they should be ready to go. So then the next step with the, with the professional learning communities is the vertical alignment to make sure that they're from one grade to the next, that they follow through and there's some consistency. Erin's report, the Director of Equity Diversity and Inclusion. She's done a ton of work across the district and the Beyond Diversity Training, which I had talked to you before about was phenomenal and she gave you some feedback tonight about teachers and what they had to say. And it will be offered again in June, which is really exciting. Leadership from those that took the Beyond Diversity Training, there's a leadership team from that that will take a LEEDs training. It's a five-day training. The next steps, looking into the Beyond Diversity through the same courageous conversation. So that's exciting. The Student Retreat for Essex High School will take place this Friday and it's on issues of equity at Essex High School and it's being held at UVM Alumni House, which is where our Beyond Diversity Training was held in this beautiful building. That was, it's nice to be away too and to be treated.
And I think Tilly as well. They're both attending.
Oh, Tilly's going too?
Yes, we just chatted about it. So, yeah.
That's awesome. Thank you. Erin and others, she's organized several implicit bias trainings throughout the different schools and also for central office staff in the operations side. We have admin assistants taking that and thank you for that work. That's been great and they've asked for it. Erin also continues to participate in the Equity Practitioners Network in the state of Vermont and learning from that and seeing what resources and what's happening throughout and how they fit into our work here at EWSD. The Essex Leadership Team, I should just have you do this. The Essex Leadership Team.
I don't have it in front of me, so.
Is engaged in We All Belong training through CG, CQ strategies. And they'll be bringing that training back to the faculty across in the second semester. Erin continues to co-facilitate the Community and Equity Group with Karen Dolan from CJC. And there's an event planned for February 12th, which is exciting, a movie showing.
Details still forthcoming.
And we continue as a district, Erin and chances that she has reads, we're working through a book on, with case studies. So tomorrow she'll be facilitating a conversation. She'll read a case study and it's real-life case studies. And then the leadership team will talk about how they would solve those or work through those issues and then we have conversations. So she continues to do that throughout the system, which has provoked some great conversations and we've discovered some issues that we have through those conversations. We are in the media. Burlington Free Press wrote about the implementation of our Help Desk and we're on the cover.
Yeah, we got the cover of Burlington Free Press.
It's also been in the Essex Reporter. But, and then the Help Desk, administration will be meeting with the Help Desk in the first few months and see how that implementation has gone and asking for feedback and they'll be looking at the data to that. So that'll be exciting to look at that data. And Dylan with the Social, Emotional and Learning Wellness, he, he'll be here next week. So you can ask questions and see what else is going on, but we're still working with the Castle Competencies or Standards. They're called competencies as Castle does, and the breakdown of those. He's been working with the team for a full day in January, March and April to do that work. Jackie's working with them, so it's the same process as we use for the essential standards in literacy and math. So that's a great connection there. There's, we did not have that speaker in November, but that grant fund has bought some books. So school-wide facilitation and reads can be done around social emotional learning. The SEL coaches at the building level still support staff and some students in ways, looking at different ways for calmer lunchrooms and things like that they're bringing to the district. And then observing, they're also observing and coaching teachers, co-leading and leading skills around groups with students and then redesigning school routines is what I was just talking about in structures to improve climate. That is my report.
Thanks, Ben. Questions for Beth? Yes?
A question regarding an item that wasn't covered, the morale survey for employees. Can you give us a status update?
The morale survey? We were doing the equity survey again that will be given to students and staff. And we said that we would like to do that in two, for two years so that we can see some, for two years of data because that will help us. And that's what we'll use, but I don't have a morale survey.
Okay. And when will those results be out?
We gave it last year too late, so we have to look at a date.
I, March or April is probably a good timeframe. Yep. And we'll, we'll plan that out and try to do high quality communication around it. We learned some things in implementation last year that we needed to, every time you do something for the first time, right? Twenty twenty hindsight. And so communication will be a critical piece of that and we'll be in touch as we progress.
Okay.
Yep.
Good, got it.
Okay. Any other questions for Ben? Yes?
We were talking about that, that lunchrooms are getting better. Are, are conditions on the bus getting better?
We have many support staff that are riding those buses and rotating through the buses. And we work on that overall. I do have complaints that come in and we work with those parents and students. There's expectations that are in each of the buses, so that's something that hadn't been done before. They're same consistent. The bus drivers have had, have had trainings by Jamie and some of the same responsive classroom language being brought onto the bus. Continue to work on it.
Anything else? Okay. Local statewide updates. Let's, you said, Kim had something?
She just wanted the board to know that the State Board of Ed is hearing testimony on Act 77, Personalized Learning and Proficiency-Based Learning and Grading and wanted to report that there was lots of thoughtful testimonies on both sides of the issues, professionals, administrators, teachers, students. And recognition that proficiency-based learning is different from proficiency-based grading. And generally, most people really are appreciating the proficiency-based learning piece and have, are having different opinions about grading. She wanted you all to know that.
I'll just report that I spoke to Dylan Chiam Batista this week. He is absolutely aware of our need for legislation around the election of school board members. And he'll, you know, he's talked to his chair about it. And I also told you last time that Jim Hach has asked about it on the Senate side as well. That's certainly something we'll have to stay on top of. It sounds like House Ed is working on literacy and I think Dylan has spoken with Beth. I asked him about the waiting study and gave him a heads up that he really needs to look at the financial implications for our district and districts like ours. And he seems pretty confident, as Brian has been, that nothing's going to happen around that this year. Anything else that people have seen in the news that they have questions about or?
I did spend about forty-five minutes with Dylan one day last week.
Probably Monday.
Thursday. Thursday. It was at the superintendent's and legislators' lunch. And I invited him to eat lunch with me. So we discussed literacy the whole lunch.
Great.
Sure, he was thrown.
He was.
I'm sure he was. He said he learned a lot.
Okay, yeah.
One thing of interest is the thirty-two districts that are embroiled in court about the forced consolidation. I, I know that the bullet went out, but there hasn't been any further.
Well, it'll, they, you know, they made their cases or each side made their case. But it usually takes the Supreme Court several months to come forward with that decision. So I expect it will take a while.
Right. I'm just curious if the court rules in their favor.
Good grief. Who knows what that means? Yes. Yeah. Okay, so take a couple minutes to do the meeting evaluation. If you'd like to do it here, we need to get next Tuesday for a budget workshop. And our next regular board meeting is February fourth. Anything else? Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you.